You know what, it's, it was written in their.
Either sit through this miserable meeting or get beaten, something like that.
Here we go.
What, the end?
Okay.
I sent it through them.
Good morning, I'd like to call the order. The regular meeting of April sixteenth, twenty twenty five of the Spalding County Water and Sewerage Facilities Authority. They got a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, excuse me. Motion by Mr. Morrow. Second by Mr. Davis. All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous, six zero. Mr. Brandon is gonna leave, or lead the invocation and. Followed by pledge of flag by Mr. Morrow.
Gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day and we thank you for all your many blessings. And thank you for bringing us each here safe today and ask that you be with those that are traveling and their safety, Lord. Lord, we, we ask that your hand be on this group as we meet today to conduct the business of the Spalding County Water Authority and that we make sound decisions on the behalf of our customers and our community. We also ask that you hand be on those who are needing, they need and are sick and suffering, Lord, and that you provide for them. Lord, we ask these things in your name, amen.
You join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here with me just a second. Springtime high irritation. We have any citizen comments? No citizen comments? Skipping on to item six, minutes, consider approval, the March nineteenth, twenty twenty five, regular scheduled meeting and executive session minutes.
Chairman, they appear to be in order. If everybody agrees, I move, we accept them as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Morrow and a second by Ms. Flowers Taylor. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, unanimous, seven zero. Consider acceptance of the following minutes, that's what we do, consider planning committee, April twenty, April second, twenty twenty five. Finance Committee, April ninth, twenty twenty five.
Chairman, I move, we accept the minutes as published.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Morrow, a second by Ms. Flowers Taylor. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, unanimous, seven zero. Item seven, special committee report. Mr. Morrow, please take over.
Chairman, we had an excellent work session here on the planning committee. We discussed the wholesale IGA with the city on sewer, temporary sewer service, has that moved forward since our meeting?
Yes, we have sent it to the city of Griffin for, replied with our comments.
Okay, so that was moving forward. We also had a pretty in-depth discussion, twenty inch water main update out to the county line for the project. And that is moving forward pending a contract.
Correct.
And we also responded to a proposal by Joseph about employee service award recognition committee. We felt that was a good idea to develop such a work for our employees. We've got some, we've got some highly adequate employees out there. Now, we've got some great folks and they need, they need to be recognized, so. You're working on that, I guess, too?
Yes, we'll have two ready for him, May, May meeting.
What, what is it, the, excuse me, what is the recognition going to be?
So, right now, the recognition is through Spalding County and per the IGA that was entered into last year. The employees of the Water Authority are actually employees of the Water Authority and not Spalding County employees, we just use Spalding County benefits. So, when we get the award recognition from HR and it says Spalding County on it. But we wanted to know, does the Water Authority want to recognize them? The county can also recognize them if they choose to, but they're really Water Authority employees.
It is for years of service.
Years of service, correct. You know the little plaques, the ten year, five year, fifteen year?
Joseph wants to say Spalding County Water Authority on it.
Okay, but I, I guess I don't understand why that would be a problem.
It, it wasn't. All we're doing is asking if y'all wanted to do that. If not, we were just gonna sign the Spalding County certificate and then let them be acknowledged at a board of commissioner meeting.
So he's gonna present us a transition to.
Now, they'll be presented at our meeting and we can have pictures with them.
So, so we're gonna do it twice or we're gonna do it once?
I, if the county wants to recognize them as being county employees, that is fine, but per the IGA, they are Spalding County Water Authority employees.
So what about people who were county employees before they started working for the Water Authority? So they would have a different longevity?
Correct, that is correct.
So.
It'd be the longevity with the Water Authority. We have, for example, Mr. Ballard. Mr. Ballard, before he came to us, he had seven years with, or. He had some time, I don't know the exact time, but he had time with the Public Works and then when he came to us, he only, he has a shorter time with us than he does as the county entirety.
Okay, so you're gonna come up with a schedule for what, when an award should be given? Or are you gonna base it, base it on what Spalding County does?
I see no reason to change that.
Okay.
Alright, so, what's our questions, yeah, the questions, that's our, my report.
Finance Committee report, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Todd Barnes came and provided an update to us on the timetable for revenue bonds, specifically Series twenty twenty five. Was the first issue that we talked about and spent a lot of time making sure this is a critical task for us a little, little, a, little later on. The second was on the AKB Sewer Project. The general manager gave us an update on the project and how we're doing with GMP. And the last issue was water distribution model effort with the city and Hampton. The general manager explained that this contract stems from an agreement between the city and the city of, city of Griffin and the city of Hampton. And where Griffin agrees to supply Hampton a certain amount of water. And the critical part to us is through our transmission lines. That completed our report.
I, I have a question, I'm in the meeting, obviously. Does this, does this agreement predate our, our last water contract or is this agreement come afterwards? So we don't have to give Griffin permission to use our lines to transmit?
The water sales agreement that we entered into clearly articulates that city of Griffin can use our, we agree that the city can use our water mains to sell water to any water provider outside Spalding County. The only thing that we control is if we have the capacity in order to do so.
Go ahead and explain, explain the rest of it, hang on, go ahead and explain the rest of it.
No, but that's, that's the point that I want to make and I, and I know nobody wants to hear this, but I sat here and I sat out there and said, saying that we want a one percent transmission fee, dig. Was a big deal because clearly now they're using all of our lines and we're getting nothing for it.
Well, here's the word, go ahead and explain what the problem came in at.
So, when, when the original request came to the Water Authority to say, hey, this is what is being proposed, this is where we wanna connect and this is how much flow we want at the county line. We said, okay, we'll take that. We went to our modeling team and we said, how much water can we allow to go through our lines without negatively impacting the Water Authority's infrastructure? It came to a dismal low flow of around a hundred gallons a minute. That's what kicked the hornet's nest and they said, hold on a second, that's not, this doesn't make sense. So we got on a call with all the parties and we told them the things that we care about are, we wanna make sure that our tanks are gonna recharge adequately, that the, the residual pressure isn't gonna drop below forty PSI. We're looking at head loss in the lines to ensure that velocities aren't getting too high and prematurely wearing our, our system out and we're looking at fire flow reduction. So we have metrics that we are holding the line to and now city of Hampton has requested a TOF for modeling efforts to show what improvements would be necessary in order to facilitate the required flow being requested at the county line.
So the bottom line is the city sold, sold water for a contract that they can't even come close to delivering. They did it independent of what we can do, it's a debacle, in my opinion.
They signed the contract with the city of Hampton before we had the water model updated. We didn't get the official results until December. They signed this agreement prior to the December meeting.
So, so what does, where does that leave us?
It leaves us to say, you can't use our water main unless you do system improvements and in order to determine what system improvements are required, you have to tell us who's paying for it because we're not doing it. So that's where it stands.
Increase flow.
Yeah. So, if they're serious about this, that they got themselves into, they're gonna have to improve our water lines immensely to even come close to delivering, so there might be a silver lining in there, if you will.
I'll be looking for it.
Good luck, huh? They currently can't fill the sunny side tank as everything sits right now before Hampton. And if they move forward what they, what they wanted to do, we would have basically lost the sunny side tank.
They just charged ahead without even talking to us, it's crazy.
So now, we, so what we've done, we always knew that we were gonna need official documentation showing any developer, regardless if you're in our service area or if the city of Griffin is gonna sell water through our mains, we knew we were gonna need a comprehensive document that is clearly, that clearly states what our objectives are and how we're gonna measure people. So, we've started that work and we're actually going to have metrics showing this is what we will allow and this is what we will not allow. So when we get that document ready to bring in front of everyone, y'all will see exactly how we're gonna hold any developer or any person wanting to use our water system to, we're gonna use, we're gonna hold everybody to the same standard, regardless of your wholesale.
It doesn't matter if the water's coming from butts or they're trying to, to send it to wherever, the same metrics will apply regarding our equipment.
Because they cannot impact our system by selling water to other people.
Okay, I can live with that. Okay, thanks for explaining that.
Thank you for being on top of that, yes. Cause I think in the past we would have said, sure.
So.
And, and then gone ups, we gotta upgrade our system.
That's right.
It's gonna cost us.
That's right, so the way that, the way that we remember the whole fire hydrant situation where the Water Authority was buying for fire hydrants, well, we determined that that was actually included in the fire tax, so what I was telling Brandon is, with the city is the residents of Spalding County pay a fire tax. That fire tax capacity is built into our system, we have to make sure if anybody's going to allow fire flow for reduction, the board of commissioners are gonna have to allow us or tell us if they're gonna allow that or not, because I'm gonna make the line, if the Spalding County rate payers through their taxes are paying for a fire flow of fourteen hundred gallons a minute at this one hydrant, no matter who sells water, that four hundred gallons per minute can't be impacted. Someone's gonna have to pay for it.
Joseph, are those metrics that you just mentioned in our water agreement? Currently, they're not.
It's so vague, there, that, that was the concern I had when I started reading the contract, there's really no, all it talks about is when the contract expires, we acknowledge that the city has entered into these long agreements to sell water outside the county lines through our water mains, so when the, assuming that we don't re-enter into an agreement in twenty forty five, we get down to dictate transmission fee percentage. But that assumes that we have available capacity. Well, the only way to determine if we have available capacity is we have to get these metrics in place where we show this is how we're measuring the capacity, so no one can dispute it or disputed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Moving on to item eight, general manager's report, consider acceptance of the general, general manager report as presented by General Manager Johnson.
So the water sales summary, we're up seven percent for the fiscal year, oh, we're starting on customer, gotcha. We, our customers added a hundred and eighty nine fiscal year to date, we're up a year-over-year percent change of one point seven four. To put that kinda in, per, well, I'll wait till meter sales for that one, next. I think you're too far down, maybe? There should be meter sales, customer service. Okay, that's, I guess, I didn't update that when.
Just recap.
Yeah. Okay, the meter sales, everything, or water summary sales, we're up seven percent, we've sold six hundred ninety-eight million gallons of water. The customer summary, we're up one point seven percent year-over-year. One thing I will tell you, we've added, you know, last, last month, we talked about looking at residential, non-residential and looking at average base charges. Just to show you the new rate increase. The, the new in, rates that were established, our non-residential, the average base charge right now is sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents, so that's gonna start increasing. And eventually it will get to some, we're, once we get twelve months into it, that's when we're gonna start normalizing and seeing exactly what the average non-residential base rate is, because remember it's a function of meter size, so we have meters ranging from three quarters to eight. Fire hydrant maintenance. So, we are still showing, we're outside the six-month window. After looking at the numbers based on yesterday's activities, we are now within range. So right now, the, the estimated time of completion is eleven twenty-five, the week of Thanksgiving. So, our team is, we're, we're gonna hit our metric inside that six-month maintenance window. The meter sales summary shows a little bit of a grim view where we're down roughly seventy-two meters fiscal year-to-date. So, as promised, we've started looking at city tech permits in relation to our meter sales and it's no more than a timing issue. For example, in calendar year twenty twenty-four, the number of permits, the new resident, new single-family residential permits pulled was down fourteen percent. Our meter purchases were down thirteen percent, so we're right in line. As of calendar year twenty twenty-five, city tech's down four, we're down sixteen, so we are, it's, it's no more than a timing issue at this point. The non-revenue water summary report, we still are waiting on the city of Griffin to provide us the reports from January. I've reached out multiple times, hopefully we'll get that soon. And then moving on to the project, so the big, the big update revolves around the progressive design build, AKB Sewer Project. So we submitted the Jeep application on March thirty-first. The total GMP price, we received a contract that will be in front, be brought in front of y'all in the meeting in Jan, or June. The total GMP price is nineteen million, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Now, that number includes the phase two A committed money of one point nine nine five that we've already committed, so ultimately, we're talking about a little north of a seventeen million dollar difference that we still owe for the project. We have four closings, our four pieces of property, four easements that we're waiting on closing dates to be set on. And we initiated the twenty twenty-five bond team call last week with Raymond James, Raftellus and Murray Barnes and Finisterre. Some things that came out of that discussion, they're gonna require, Murray Barnes and Finisterre is gonna require a financial feasibility study to be done and accompany the bond issuance. We've already got Raftellus to give us a quote on that.
Is that normal?
Yes. The fact that we are going after the bonds without the county's backing, that's the reason why this financial feasibility study is required, because they wanna show that the Water Authority is, we're, we're gonna make the changes and put in the things, implement the policies and procedures to ensure that the bond payers can be paid back.
So, so all of that fretting we were doing with the county about whether or not, how they would say whether or not they will back the bonds or partner with us, we, we really didn't need that.
But we might in the future.
We might, but not.
Yeah, but, but I'm just saying, we were thinking to move forward, we needed that.
Well, we were thinking that we weren't the same bond rating as the county. But based on the Raymond James preliminary assessment, we're, we're double A.
Okay.
We're double A three.
Yes, sir.
One A, double A three.
What, what did you say?
Double A three.
Okay.
Single A one, double A three.
Double A three, we're on the.
All feet are saying, yeah, I don't know what you just said.
There's a, there's a range, when they give you a rating, there's a range.
And we're on the higher range of the double A?
We're on the lower range of the double A, higher range of the A.
Sorry, yeah, so.
So that's not the same place that the county is in.
When you look at a double A rating, are they, do we know, they're double A one?
Double A one. Aren't you double A one, Eric? There's not much difference.
The rate, the rate that we were quoted.
There's not much difference in the rates.
Yeah, the rate that we were quoted would be very similar, it's, it's not significant.
Okay, they're different.
Based on, yes.
Now, we would get a reduced rate if it was a county-backed.
Yeah.
It would, the rate would be lower, the interest rate would be lower.
Yeah, by point one five percent.
This is a really big deal for us and the separation between the county and the water authority. And the water authority being able to stand up and say, this is what we're trying to do, and this is how much money we're gonna, interest rate we're gonna be able to get. So it's a pretty big cut between us, I didn't believe it was gonna be, we were able to get there from here, and it's a big, big deal.
We were amazed that our rating was so good, but since these are revenue bonds, based on the revenue, that's why you have to have this report to show that the revenue.
Okay.
Um, some other documents that were requested uh, by Mar- Murray Barnes and Finisterre, um, there were, they asked for like project description, the GMP contract, things like that, we've, uh, and some financial documentation. We've satisfied all the requests for documentation, um, so it's in their court. And I can tell you, they have sent a slurry of contracts, I don't, I don't envy Stephanie at this point, cause there's a lot of documents that she has reviewed.
They, they have keeped up quite a bit of documentation in the last couple of days.
That's right, so.
I'm counting the warehouses all the way.
Oh, yeah.
Another warehouse.
We got a million dollars in warehouses already.
So that's the progressive design build uh, project. Um, the leaden, another big, big project update is lead and copper rule compliant, so you know, last year, we had to send uh, letters to all the unknown locations. Well, with our great GIS team, they've developed a dashboard that our field staff can use to, when we go out to locations that have an unknown at it, we can now track the number of unknowns that are going from unknown to known status. So, in about six months, I'll be able to give you an estimation on when we think that's gonna be complete. Uh, but that work is, is progressing nicely.
I would like to clarify for the people at home, please do not call us accusing us of putting lead in your water, because that is not what this rule does.
That is correct.
There is no lead in your water. Please do not read Facebook and believe what you read on there. Thank you, continue.
And that's all the, that's the major updates. Any questions?
Are you proceeding with the CBD grant, CBDG grant?
So, the, as of this point, the Pine Tree Hill HOA has not requested me to go out there. I was supposed to go in January, the meeting was canceled, and they haven't established another meeting for me to come. I can tell you that if we decide to go that route, we're outside the window, we're gonna have to get, um, we're gonna have to re-advertise for engineering and grant administration or grant writing RFP, because the two, two-year window has elapsed.
That, that project, that CBD grant, CBDG grant needs to either be put on hold or dropped because of the revenue request, we have to pay that back. Which, we're not, we're not in a position to be forgiven on that loan.
Well, the CBDG.
We'd be adding twelve, twelve million dollars worth of debt to repayment to the debt we already potentially acquired.
Well, so to clarify, we haven't accepted a loan, that was just the application too.
No, no, I understand that, that, I don't see any reason to proceed at this point.
Okay.
So, part, this is, this is kinda the problem for me as a, as a commissioner. We have, as a board, have stepped back from applying for the CDBG for the county because the water authority had had some ongoing things. And if I'm not mistaken, you can't have two entities within county government that is applying for CDBG. So, we didn't apply for CDBGs for community cleanup or infrastructure because we stepped back for the water authority to do it. So I think it's important that if we're not gonna do it, and I don't know if the county is outside of a line where we um, would be able to do it, but, but, you know, we, we need to be sharing that information back and forth because we could have certainly have projects that we could have applied for that money for. So, I mean, I don't know where that stands, but we certainly need to look into that, if that is not something that, I don't know where the, the application window is right now, but I don't, and I don't know if that would give us enough time to be able to, to do anything with it.
The application for CDBGs are April of every year, so you could go to, you could get your stuff ready between now and the end of the year to, uh, go.
Roll in for next year.
To, yes, calendar year twenty-six. But I, I, if y'all want to, so, let me know how you wanna apply, but the FY twenty-four CDBG grant, the surveys are good for three years. So the surveys are good for an additional year. The contracts for um, P preliminary engineering report and grant writing has lapsed, so we would have to go back and art, re-RFP that.
Okay, but um, couldn't Larry Wallace do that for us? I mean, couldn't we request that, rather than going outside and hiring out, we, there's a grant writer here who's doing CSBG and other.
We could, we could ask if he has that capacity.
Um, okay.
But, correct.
Well, when we was doing the CB, CDBG, what are these acronyms? Um, we didn't get enough information to actually finish an application per that, and I can't remember.
Yeah, we never submitted an application.
What her name was, I can't remember what her name was, we, we didn't get enough information.
Deversnitz.
Who?
Deversnitz.
Survey.
Yeah, maybe that's who it was.
So maybe.
But we've, we've moved on, we've moved forward this, and I can tell you right now, we don't have the staff to be, to doing anything other than this right now, this is, we have something to do every week in order to meet this funding deadline.
Remember, the grant application was to the point where we were gonna specify which target area we wanted to do. So they ranked them, we did zone one, two, and three, East Griffin and, East Griffin was the primary. Pine Tree was the second one, and then Dundee was the third one, because that's really, there's, that'd be turned over to the city of Griffin service area. So, the board had requested me to go talk to Pine Tree because their, their minimum bill is gonna jump significantly. I have not been requested to uh, meet with them yet, so that's where the project stands, so when application was never submitted, we've never even given uh, Alan Smith which target area we were gonna go after.
Okay, because I was thinking, I was thinking that Pine Tree was the primary area, I had forgotten that, that East, we hadn't.
E- East Griffin's, East Griffin's scored higher.
Yep.
But.
Cause they looked at four, right?
Yeah, even, even with East Griffin scoring higher, you still have to have someplace to send it to. This has gotta come first.
So, so maybe as a board, we could, you know, have Joseph to entertain what sort of services we could get from this Spalding County grant manager and grant writer. Um, as opposed to having to go out and do a RFP, find out, to hire somebody to do the same thing that they're doing. Um, just like we're doing with the GIS and other things like that with the county. But um, yeah, I just, I really wish we were able to, and I know we're kinda stopped and stopped in a place where we can't do anything, but before next year, we probably need to really work on where we're gonna, where we're gonna go, cause I hate to le- ever leave money on the table.
And, so we did request from the board of commissioners if we could file an application on their behalf, and they obliged us. So, we, we probably need to let them know if we're not gonna meet the FY twenty-six or calendar year twenty-six timeline, to let them know that if they wanna pursue something, we can pick it up in twenty-seven.
I don't see how we can do twenty-six right now, I just.
I, I agree.
Well, at least, I mean, I don't know what we can do, but at least.
That, that's really a bigger example of just to make sure that, that we're, we're talking back and forth. Because there's some times that, okay, we think you're doing it, we just, we just have to make sure we're paying attention specifically, uh, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor and I, that, okay, hold it, you're backing out, we, we need to step forward to do that.
And Cal's right on the financing, the revenue and all that, and I'm, and, and tool, this is, East Griffin, there is a path, I don't know if it's financially feasible, we hadn't looked at it yet, that we can send it to this sewer plant, but until we get over this and, and have a place to send sewer, I, I, I don't see us doing anything in twenty-six.
It's, it's really a long-range plan.
Yeah, I don't see any, us doing anything in twenty-six either, I, I, if the rest of the board wants to chime in on that, I just don't see it happening right now.
Well, I can tell you, if the, if the sewer project goes, and with all the dominoes, and the dominoes fall into place, East Griffin may have a path to get to our plant within the next three years.
Okay.
But we'd have to.
It's, it's still a long range.
That's right.
We ain't even looked into the money or the fin- any of that, I mean, the revenue would obviously with the houses and the bills and everything, yeah, but we'd have to look at it, we haven't got that for you.
So do we need to do anything officially to notify the county that we're not gonna take advantage of this? So that they can, if, if they have a project?
I think we know it, we're just, we're just, she knows it now, so.
Eric, you got that?
Let's, let's.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Let's send it to the planning meeting, and let's put it on the next agenda, and Joseph can send an official letter.
Okay.
Don't want it floating out there.
Yeah.
You got anything else to your report?
That's it.
Your complete.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the manager's report.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, a second by Mr. Davis, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, unanimous, seven to zero, passed, uh, we're accepting. Out of nine new business, consider. Oh, yeah, yeah. Consider rescinding.
We're now eight, not seven zero, eight zero. Just go ahead and join us, right? Gotta not count, one, two, three, four, five, six, never mind, I can't count.
Normally, normally, you.
I thought the rhythm there.
Normally, you would be right, but this time, I was actually on point.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rescind the not-to-exceed budget for the coming year, thirty-six billion, fifteen thousand.
Let me read it real, let me finish reading it real quick.
Okay.
Consider rescinding the not-to-exceed thirty-six million, thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollar approval made on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-five for the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Now, I make a motion, we rescind that.
I second it.
Alright, we got a motion by Mr. Cal Oxford.
And I have a question.
Second by Mr. Morrow, and Gwen has a question.
And why are we doing that?
So, the thirty-six million, thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars included the deficit or the budget deficit being funded by cash out of the water authority, so the actual budget, the total budget was thirty-seven million, one hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Stephanie said we needed to do this.
You need to rescind the, the, the not-to-exceed amount that you've already provided, so that, that the amount can be approved, which is the next item, which is a higher not-to-exceed amount.
Okay, so, but what are the, what, what did you say the additional expenses were?
So, it's our, when we added up all the GIS sewer and water budgets with the sewer project as estimated, the total budget was actually thirty-seven million, one hundred and eighty thousand.
Eighty-seven thousand.
A hundred and, thirty-seven million, one hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars.
The sewer project.
Where did that previous number come from?
The thirty-six oh one three, when we looked at all our revenue streams that we were gonna get, the delta was the one point one six million dollars that we were gonna fund out of cash. So that's the delta.
But just, it's just adding into what we're paying out of cash, not.
So when you total everything.
It's sort of clerical difference, if you will. It didn't include what we'd already paid in cash.
The sewer project wound up a half a million dollars in a month, because we hadn't signed a contract yet due to still tariffs.
So, so I understand this. But what I also wonder is that we, the county's plan, which it hasn't been voted on yet, is that um, in January, the, our, the amount of inmate labor that we've been providing may change. So if we have to hire new people, would we not wanna consider that that would be in this budget?
So, this is all, that we were gonna talk about this in the uh, planning committee next month, in May. Um, what Ms. Gwen Flowers-Taylor is referring to is, we've been put on notice that um, we could be getting our inmate labor reduced to somewhere between zero and, I guess, the number that we have now is six. So, we are internally looking at what the budget complications look like, and I can tell you right now, it's probably a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar ding to the budget. But that is not reflected in here, because the budget had already been uh, sent to the county in preparation for them advertising, and I was just notified of this earlier this week.
So, what we might have to do later on is amend the budget.
Correct.
Be a budget amendment.
But I tell you this, when, if we go the bond route in the covenants, it's gonna be very clear that we cannot drop below that one point two five debt coverage ratio, if we do, we are considered to be in default. So, you know, everybody had always wanted a strategy, we are gonna have a strategy, and, and we, we have guardrails that are gonna be put in place where when we make a decision, we can't just do it saying, well, we have plenty of cash to, to make this up, it's, we're good. Because we don't have the, the county's backing, we're gonna be in a whole different boat.
What's the reasoning for the possible change with the inmate labor?
Uh, just because it could, we, we lose about six million dollars, the county's funding it with taxpayer dollars to the, to about six million dollars, what we recoup from the entities that use it, including ours, is.
Couple.
Paying for it.
Yeah.
So we lose four million dollars every year, pay, to have that here. We don't think that that's a, a thing that the citizens should be paying for.
You don't, you give a full day's worth of work either, do you, cause you gotta pick them up, you gotta take them back.
I just.
So just, I'm, I'm, I'm just want us to be aware that this could be a change for us in the middle of the year, in the middle of our fiscal year.
And.
Yeah, personally, I'd really make the change next month, but um, this is my opinion.
We're, right now, we spend about, we have a budget item for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year that we pay for inmate labor. So, we're talking about what, two and a, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar difference between what we'd have to, what we pay now and what we'd have to cover if we brought on labors.
Well, you're swapping one to one person, right?
Uh, so we're going, no, we get six inmates.
If you get a full workday.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask for five labors just because of safety concerns.
This will be a little bit more significant than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we're paying, probably about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct. Well, all in, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I just thought I'd throw that wrench in the hole.
But that will be vetted, we're gonna, I, I plan on discussing that in the May planning meeting.
Okay.
I got a motion by Cal and a second by Dick, any other discussion about the rescension? Please raise your hand. Seven zero, any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Uh, consider approval of the fiscal year twenty-six budget not to exceed thirty-seven million, one hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars.
So move.
Second.
Uh, Gwen, seconded.
Motion by Cal, second by Gwen. Any further discussion? Please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item, well, we're still in line.
Three.
Next item, three, consider the master services agreement with THC for easement acquisition services.
Spell that out.
Just sitting here because.
For, what is the name of that company? For your.
I don't know the metaphor.
Charlie do this on purpose?
Hi.
Hope they give away some samples.
Are we smoking?
And Cal does too, for the.
Crownies.
For, for your information, um,
Yeah.
this is, the group is doing the easements now as part of our contract for the sewer plant. However, because we're gonna need easements for the twenty-inch water line, potentially, and others, we're gonna hire the same company to step forward to do all that for us. It'd be our contract with them instead of going through the sewer uh, engineers. So.
And that agreement's approved as before.
And this is just a master service agreement for them, for more easements to come. And I move we approve.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Morrow, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis, any further discussion?
How many parcels, just rough enough?
I mean, uh, to, for all in, um, about twenty-five?
Yeah.
Eight, eight miles, six miles.
Can't say that.
Four and a half.
If they just send a contract, they'll pay for it, we just.
This is out in butts, right? The, the end, end of it will be in butts, okay.
The ten, the the contractee, if you will, will pay for it. We just supply the service and then reimburse us.
So it's net neutral for us. We're just, we're just the in-between stuff.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay.
Alright, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Consider approval of available bond documents as presented.
Mr. Chairman, the only um document to be approved this morning is the reimbursement resolution.
Reimbursement resolution, is it? Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the reimbursement resolution.
I got a motion, I got a second by Mr. Davis, motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to other business, the next regular scheduled meeting will be held on Wednesday, May twenty-first of twenty twenty-five at eight thirty AM in the courthouse annex meeting room. A special called meeting will be held on Wednesday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five at.
Nine AM.
Nine AM.
Not eight thirty, nine.
The location of the meeting will be announced as soon as it is confirmed. Erica believes we can have this conference room, but we will, Charlie will send out an email and everybody know for sure.
You say at, not at eight thirty?
At nine.
Is it nine? Is it nine o'clock? And I need, if you're not gonna be able to make that meeting, please let Charlie know ASAP. We need to have a quorum here to keep the schedule.
We gotta move these bond things on or or we face an increased price in the contract if we don't do, get this done.
Yeah, we have a, we have.
Inflation is gnawing at us.
Something to do with this bond issuance every week from now until June eighteenth. Every week, there's something we gotta accomplish, we gotta check off.
And the only.
That's because we're in such a compressed time schedule.
Yeah.
The only Superior Court um calendar that we that we have available to us the week of Memorial Day is Judge Miller's Drug Court. Um, and we've asked that this be specially set, that the um, the bond hearing be specially set so that we can be on the calendar. On the thirtieth of May, which is the last day of that week.
What does that hearing entail?
Um, it it's typically just pro forma. It gives the opportunity for objections. It's more like a calendar call. I just ask if if anyone is is there um to object and. Nobody has been. And um, then the judge signs off on the order allowing us to issue bond.
This is Georgia's thing.
Both of the motions.
Yeah, the typically, the district attorney has to sign off on on it as well.
It's our benefit, actually. It says everything we presented is true loss, and so once it's done by the court, it takes a lot of liability off us. You didn't tell us. Good. Thank you.
Secretary of Treasury comments?
None.
General Manager comments?
None.
Authority member comments, starting with Mr. Oxford?
Nothing.
Mr. Davis? Brandon?
It's Gwen.
Gwen Flowers Taylor.
If you missed the planning and financial meeting, you missed the whole, everything that we're talking about. Just saying, Gwen. That's all I got.
I'll honk the horn next time I drive by.
Yes. Absolutely.
Skinner?
Two questions. With the bond separation slash financial status from the county, do we need to think about our own financial board?
So, that's a great question. Um, at this point, because the twenty fifteen bonds are backed by the county. It hadn't been a question or that needed to be answered, but I can tell you the fact that we are planning on paying off the twenty fifteen bonds and the twenty twenty-five bonds being solely in the Water Authority. There is, at at that point, that would be the time that we can talk about if we wanna start looking at finance our own um, a a finance department of our own.
No reflection on you here, it's just separation.
Uh, it's been the train for a couple of years now, but.
Yeah, I mean, that would.
But that would impact our budget too. We'd have to sit back and look at it. But what what has made all this possible is that our twenty fifteen bonds, cause we're, you know, we could have paid them off a long time ago, but we'd have to pay all the penalties. When we found out through this process that they can actually be called in in June, and we can go ahead and pay them off and not pay any penalties, and that's what's made all this possible. That's that's what, where how the debts got consolidated and we're able to basically continue on building the sewer plant with roughly the same debt payment every year.
And I can tell you with the, and Erica can probably back me on this, we're not a big load on the finance department's overall um capacity. Would you, is that a fair set statement? So if, it's not like if you decided, if y'all told me to start looking at a strategy to. Get finance capabilities, it's not like we're gonna need a CFO tomorrow. We can probably handle it with a staff accountant, use a third-party auditing company. And then get to the point where sometime down the road, we would need that level of expertise. So.
So you're gonna pay for it on one side, you're gonna pay for it on the other side.
That's right.
Yep.
Yep.
Question, most cost-effective.
Second question.
Um, with the Butts County water line, do we have the same issues? With the Hampton deal?
Potentially. No, sir. No, sir. We, so, we made sure during the water modeling effort, this discussion was happening behind the scenes. We ensured the size of the line was sized accordingly, and I believe you asked uh a couple meetings ago, should we not increase it? That was also looked at. So we're we're safe with the uh, with the twenty-inch size.
There is a known amount of water that can flow through that point at any given time.
That's a, that's in the agreement with them.
That's it. It has been clearly articulated. We have a technical memorandum that we can reference in that contract. So, yes, it it will be clearly uh stated.
Morrow. No comment.
I have none. Moving on to executive session.
Do we need one?
We do.
We do.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we move into executive session for the reasons as stated on the agenda.
I have a second. Motion by Mr. Morrow and a second by Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. I'm gonna miss the executive session.
All. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. We're ready to exit the session. Thank you, Cal.
Thank you.
Thank you.